What do you have? Oh.
I met, I worked for the park services off Florida too. And in Naples, there was a pastor. Oh, did you have one? Yes, she was from Calcutta.
I was going to say.
And she said it got to the point where she would even walk there in the summertime.
Oh, my God. I can't wait. I'm sweating. I'm just bumming and bumming.
All right, y'all, we'll go ahead and get started. I think the majority of the folks who were in line have either found their way into the building or are close. Anyway, we're streaming this in the lobby and also in the HR room, so there should be an opportunity for everybody that made it out today to participate in this. What a great crowd. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out and participating in the process and being part of this. We're here today to have a town hall to discuss the proposed Stillfire facility in our downtown. As Andrea Worthy will discuss here in a little bit, Stillfire approached the city about eight months ago about building at this location. The council met and agreed to pursue the idea further. One of the things that I learned going door-to-door, over 3,000 doors during the campaign, and I know that a lot of my colleagues also learned as they went door-to-door, is that there's a strong desire in this community for more activity and more energy in our downtown. And when this elected body met earlier this year to talk about strategic goals, economic development was at the top of the list. As you'll hear today, we're not bringing forward an industrial beer factory or even a bar, but rather a family-friendly gathering space for all ages to enjoy, as well as a new park. Today, we'll hear from our Economic Development Director, Andrea Worthy. We have Aaron Bisgus here, who's one of the owners of Stillfire and maybe our newest city of Smyrna resident. He'll be here to present about what they're hoping to do here in our city. Our city attorney, Scott Cochran, is going to talk about the land sale versus leasing the property and all of the progress that's been made there. And then I'll talk briefly about the recent work session, council work session, where we had representatives from Swanee here who attended and addressed many of the questions and concerns that are on people's minds. They went through the same exercise when Stillfire came there to Swanee a couple of years ago. I'm going to ask everybody to please hold all of your questions and comments until the end of all of the presentations, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Since this is a televised, streamed, and recorded event, just like any council meeting, I'm going to ask anybody who wishes to speak to come up to one of the two mics after you've been recognized. There's a lot of people here, obviously, and we had a hard stop time at 3:30. We're going to extend that to 3:45 since we got a late start. But I've asked that you keep your questions and comments to a minute, two at most, just to make sure that everybody who has something to say is able to do that. And keep in mind, too, when this comes before council for a vote in the upcoming months, you'll have an opportunity there for public input as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrea Worthy, our Economic Development Director here in Smyrna, for her presentation. Andrea?
Thanks. Hey, everybody. I'm hoping we can hear me there that way. Okay. Because I'm going to get to face you all, because no offense, Mayor and Council, this is for the community. It's a town hall meeting. It's a little different than what we do normally in our council meetings. So first of all, I'm Andrea Worthy. I'm your new Economic Development Director. I've been here since earlier this year, but I see some familiar faces because I was here about 10 years ago. I've been in economic development all my life, site selection work, working for utilities, working for the city of Smyrna, then the city of Sandy Springs, and I'm now very happy to be back here in Smyrna. So with that, what, as the mayor pointed out, if I can look up on our screen here, we're going to talk today really about the impact of breweries in general from an economic development perspective. We're going to talk about specifically on downtowns, what kind of impact they have. We're going to talk about specifically here in Smyrna, what type of input they could have. And then, as the mayor pointed out, Stillfire is going to come up and talk about their specific proposal, show you a conceptual design, and then we're going to get to talk about the proposed deal structure and give some Q and A. So first of all, from an economic development perspective, from someone who's been doing this 25 years, I can tell you all of my cohorts in this profession get fairly excited when a brewery or a craft brewery begins to look at their town, and that's for several reasons. First of all, having a craft brewery somewhere in your community is really an indication of the vitality of your town. So I'm happy that at least we're being considered because that means it's a place that other places want to do business. And speaking of other places doing business, having a craft brewery presence, a third place, as they like to say, it's a little bit different than a restaurant or another type of retail, really indicates to the development community that that's someplace they want to invest and do business. So that's one of the reasons that I, as an economic development professional, are excited to be presenting this in front of you today. You know, and frankly, lifestyle amenities in general for economic development have gotten to be a bigger deal, even for large employers who are looking to invest in a community, maybe wanting to build an office or some type of distribution facility, because their employees want to be located in a place that offers a lot of different types of lifestyle amenities. So let's see if we can go through some of these. Now, I put some renderings on the screen here, and again, this presentation will also be available online, because I realized over the past couple of months that not everybody has been to a craft brewery and not everybody knows what the concept is and is not. So I wanted to be able to give you some visuals of what that might look like. So not only are breweries a positive for the community overall, they are specifically, over the past several years, become much more important in downtown and downtown revitalizations. They really add another layer of community experience, like a local coffee shop, like an independently-owned restaurant, because they are an independent craft institution. They're not owned by a corporate entity. And it's a place where not only the locals want to go, but the visitors, when they come to town, they want to go where the locals go. It really gives a sense of branding and a sense of place to a community. They serve as community centers where people connect and they create vibrant neighborhoods. They add to a sense of place. And the one thing I'm most excited about is they increase foot traffic for the other businesses in the area. And speaking frankly to you, as your Economic Development Director, our downtown needs additional visitors to the area to be successful. It's had a mixed bag of success since its incorporation or since it was created 20-something years ago, and I think all of you that have been citizens here for long enough have seen some of the restaurants. Some of them have been very successful and some of them have struggled. And I think part of that is related to we don't have enough visitor traffic to our downtown. The picture here that you can see, sort of on the screen, is Gate City Brewery, which is in downtown Roswell, off of Canton Street, sits right next to all of its other restaurants and whatnot in downtown. And if you can see the picture here, it's, you know, they're not tables, it's not a restaurant, you're not sitting down and taking up space, it's a gathering place. And if you could see, there's a dog in the picture as well. That's important from a brewery perspective. So again, they're positive for downtown revitalization. They are great for supporting local art and events. They offer, frankly, they are an event venue. They are the type of place where they're trying to hold events to bring business in, obviously, and that's not something that restaurants can necessarily do. And in conversations with my other economic development officials in Cobb County and Cherokee County, they're telling me that they've added an average of 1,000 to 2,000 new visitors to downtown every week. And again, other businesses in downtown are benefiting from that foot traffic. This particular picture is a picture of Reformation Brewery, which is in downtown Woodstock. Actually, Reformation started out in an industrial area in 2013, and then they moved to downtown Woodstock in 2018 because downtowns benefit from breweries and their foot traffic, but also the breweries benefit from the existing downtown traffic and the sense of place. People want to be in a place, not necessarily a particular location, when they're visiting these types of things. Let's see. Maybe? Okay. Just the industry in general, because it's fairly new here in Georgia, or has gotten bigger in the past 10 to 15 years. And that's because of some changes in state law that allowed breweries to operate a little differently. So they've become more popular in the past 10 years. And in that time, Georgia's added over 100 new craft breweries, but it's still got a lot of room to grow because we're still 48th in per capita. So I think that's something you're going to see a lot more in the future. And the industry had a $2 billion economic impact here in Georgia alone in 2019. This particular picture is a brewery in downtown Kennesaw called Horned Owl Brewery. You know, the Kennesaw Owls, I think is why they named it that thing. And if you can see here in the picture, this is kind of the concept. You're sitting outside, also inside. It's an experience, it's a place. It's actually located right next door to those are some residences in the background. So it's right in the middle of their downtown. Kennesaw actually has several of these. This is just one I have a photo of. In Cobb County, we talked about in Georgia. In Cobb County, we had 12 craft beverage locations. Those are wineries, distilleries, or craft breweries in 2020. And this group to five, five more, now we have 17 here. This is according to Cobb Travel and Tourism. And we have at least another three facilities planned in this county for next year. So by 2022, of the six cities in incorporated cities in Cobb County, four of those will have a brewery in their downtown, not including the one we're discussing today. Acworth, Kennesaw, Marietta, and Powder Springs will all have a brewery located in their downtown. Location, location, location is what this says. So we've talked a little bit about why they like to be in downtown, but craft breweries, by definition, are not large-scale industrial producers. Do not think a Sweetwater, that is an industrial producer. They are an industrial site in downtown. If you have not been, and I cannot believe I'm saying this, but locally, you should probably go visit the one in Marietta, Glover Park. That's one. Again, we've talked about a couple more up here that you could go see in Woodstock and Kennesaw, but those are the type of operations we're talking about. We're not talking about a large-scale production. And when Aaron gets up here, he'll address a couple more issues with how he runs his operation. Being located downtown, as we talked about, is pretty important for them because they benefit from being in a sense of place and the visitors that are already coming to downtown. And we benefit, we, as the downtown, would benefit by having the extra visitation they bring. They're compatible in a mixed-use area. There's no odors, there's no emissions, no noise. So speaking specifically about downtown Smyrna, the concept you see here in front of you is from the Smyrna Bowl Plan. This downtown was created more than 26 years ago, and it was one of the first mixed-use developments in the Atlanta metro area. And it's wild to think, as an urban planner background, how many more of these things have come around. Everyone's wanted to redo their downtown, and Smyrna was the first one to do it. We were the cutting edge. That being said, there's been a lot of changes in the market in the past 26 years. Who would have thought even 10 years ago that Amazon would be having the impact on retail? And frankly, if we were redesigning downtown today, if we wanted it to be successful, we would redesign it a little differently than it looks like. Mixed-use developers now are adding more activity, more pedestrian activity. You know, speaking frankly, when we designed our downtown, it was very successful in terms of some of the public spaces and buildings that were put into place. It's not as successful from a commercial market perspective in making sure that the businesses downtown stay healthy. So we've tweaked the plan over a couple of years. You know, Johnquill's grown, Belmont's redeveloped during that time. That's completely changed the marketplace. The Battery, that's something we do compete with on some level, has been built. So again, things are very different than they were 26 years ago. And in this bowl plan that was put together, which by the way was put together before I got here, but I wholeheartedly agree with all the recommendations in it, it called for a couple of things. First of all, reactivating your public space, making it something that creates more activity. And you are in the process of doing that right now with the new redesign of the public green in downtown. The other thing it called for was adding public facilities, like additional parking, adding more pedestrian facilities so that people could, you know, it's more pedestrian-friendly. And we're in the process of doing some of those things. And the third thing was to add commercial space and visitors to downtown. And on this map that you see, the master plan that was adopted, some of the orange areas that were indicated on there as possible, possible commercial space in the future, you know, include some empty parking lots, and actually, a portion of it included the site. So again, I think we've recognized in the past that this, in the future, could potentially be some type of commercial use. The site is a green lawn today. Frankly, it was intended in the original plan that it would be something else in the future. That's one of the reasons you don't see park benches and things like that out there, because over time, we figured it would be something else. Now, the what else, or what could it be, has not happened yet, and that's one, this is one concept that we're bringing to you today to talk about. Let's see, what are we getting into now? Not moving. Heather, can you help me? It's not moving forward. Hates me. She's got the magic touch, I bet. Okay, yeah, that's it. Okay, we can go, I think we can actually move to the next one. So also, the thing I realized the other day is I'm not sure everybody's clear on what the site is that we're talking about. So this is the site. It is between Atlanta Road and the community center. The northern part of the site is the proposed brewery. It's approximately 1.4 acres, and they are proposing to us that we sell approximately one of that acre, and the other 0.4 acres would remain in the city's hands. And Scott's going to talk a little bit later about some of the reasons that we're looking at a sale versus a lease and some of those things, but I just want to make sure everyone knows where that is, even though we've been talking about it for eight months, I still have people ask me what site we're talking about. This is a map, actually, of the city downtown of Swanee. So let me tell you how this deal came together. Like a lot of different businesses, people call and say, "I'm looking for a site in Smyrna. I've got this type of business. Can you help me find a site?" And my job is to send them to potential sites. And Aaron called me from Stillfire and said, "Hey, I've got this brewery concept. We're looking at this site of town. It's already something that's very successful in Swanee." And I sent him to several sites around town that are available. I did not actually talk about this site. And Aaron called me back and he said, "Hey, I went and looked at those sites with my broker. I still really like the Smyrna marketplace, but I got to tell you, I don't think you know what it is I'm trying to do. I'm looking for a site that is, you know, closer to downtown." And he said, "I think you ought to come out and look at my production in Swanee and see what I'm talking about." And so I did. I went out there, and then it occurred to me, this is exactly the site. And he asked about it. He said, "Would you all be willing to sell it?" And I said, "I have no idea." But that's when we went and spoke to council, and council said, "It's an interesting enough prospect that you should move forward with that, and that's how we're getting here in front of you today." That's how that deal came together. But ultimately, they were not interested in other sites. They want to be in a downtown because that is where they are successful today in Swanee. So this particular map of Swanee, it's, again, very kind of difficult to see on the screen, but on the northern part, they are between a police station and a municipal court building, and they are adjacent to a city park and playground, exactly the type of concept that they're pitching here today. So again, I got very excited about this because they've done it, they've done it in a similar location to what they're proposing here, so I feel like they can be successful here. I think this is my last slide. The other thing about downtown, so right now, today in downtown, you can build a brewery in any mixed-use district. So it's already zoned for the property, and in what they're proposing, they will comply with our existing alcohol distance requirements. They will be required to comply with our noise ordinances and all the other things. So they're not asking for variances from those items. It is an event facility. It is not an industrial distribution site, which I agree with all of you, well, not all of you, but some of you, that an industrial space is not right for downtown. That's why this is not an industrial site. There are no odors or emissions. And again, from a sale of the property perspective, there are a couple of things. And again, Scott will touch on some of these later. It's really a way to place additional controls on the property that we wouldn't necessarily be able to do with a lease. And then frankly, from my perspective, what I get more excited about is if we sell this property, we actually get to tax this property. If it remains in the city or the DDA's hands, even if it is a lease, we cannot collect property taxes on this property. And as much as excited I am to have visitors and whatnot come to downtown, I'd like the city to actually, you know, collect some revenue from this as well. So this is an example here. They're planning on making a $7 million investment in Smyrna, 20 full-time employees and 60 part-time. And again, as we talked about, I'm expecting increased visitation to downtown that will spend money at other places besides their location. In Marietta, at Glover Park, the economic development officials there tell me that in addition to bringing 2,000 visitors a week to their downtown, they estimate 60% to 70% of those customers end up going out to eat somewhere else or going shopping somewhere else. So spending more of their money in Marietta. And the mayor, I think, addressed the Swanee Economic Development officials for here the other day. They said, "When we were considering a relationship with Stillfire in our community, first of all, they were an untested product because they were new. They didn't have this business elsewhere. It was their first location." And they, too, were very nervous, just like we are, about what might actually occur here in this community. And they said they have been overwhelmed with how successful it has been in bringing visitors and not having an issue for their community. So that makes me feel good as well. You can see some numbers there up on the screen. Estimated property tax with the three taxing entities, Smyrna, Cobb County, and School Board probably get about $100,000 a year in property taxes. And then the SPOLOST, sales taxes, the E-SPOLOST and the Cobb SPOLOST would also receive additional sales tax numbers from sales of the brewery alone, not including any additional sales to other restaurants in the area. So I think, Mayor, I'm getting to the point where we're going to let Stillfire come up, Aaron. And perhaps another introduction. I would encourage you all, if you have not gone on Stillfire's website, go to their website and you can actually, there's the same videos on their website. You can click on their website and see, this is their concept in Swanee, and I'm going to play it, if that's okay. I'm going to play the video here because I think it really gives you, if you haven't been there, you don't really see how it operates. This will give you a visual of kind of how it operates, how it sits next to a city park, et cetera. So let's hope I can. So you see here, this is the interior. This is, you know, where the kind of the hangout zone is. If you're looking straight there in the back, you're heading to their actual production facilities, which is where they're actually making the beer behind those doors. It opens up to the outside. And what I want you to notice here as we come around is that is the city park, right beyond those, down those stairs. That is literally the city park and the city playground that is next door to their facility. And that's what they're proposing here. Did I get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll let you drive now.
Thank you, guys, for coming out today.
Andrea, you want to turn off your microphone so that there's no feedback? Okay, thank you.
My name's Aaron Bisgus. I'm the general manager and partner at Stillfire Brewing. I'm also your newest neighbor. As Mayor Norton commented, my girlfriend and I moved here to the downtown a few months ago, planning to start a family here, and we're your newest neighbors. So normally, I would bring some samples of beer for everybody, but I would have needed a much bigger car today for the turnout, so. All right, who are we? Stillfire, we started two years ago in Swanee, Georgia. My partners and I, along with the Buglers and my aunt and uncle, John and Lori Bisgus, were looking for a place to call home. We wanted a place of community, a place to bring people together. And my partners had actually started the Swanee Beer Festival. I think it's been 11 years now. It's grown into the largest beer festival in the state of Georgia. They've had immense success, and so when we got connected with them, the idea was, hey, why don't we start a brewery of our own? Their connections with the city of Swanee allowed us to identify a couple of locations, and we really wanted to be in the heart of downtown. The goal there was to be pedestrian-friendly, family-friendly, in the heart of downtown where the activity was, and we felt like we could really bring an added benefit to the businesses and overall atmosphere that Swanee was lacking. We've been open for two years now. Despite shutdown from COVID, we've had immense success. We've really achieved a lot of our goals in terms of creating a sense of community, a sense of social gathering. At Stillfire, we are about the community. We are a social gathering place. This is a place for families, friends, kids, elders, dogs, everybody to come and hang out. It is a light, vibrant atmosphere. It is open air. It is indoor-outdoor. It has parks. It has games. It has playgrounds. It has fire pits. It's live acoustic music, events. It truly is a place for everybody in the neighborhood and in the community to come and gather, meet up with long-lost friends and neighbors, and really enjoy each other's company. You don't have to drink to enjoy a brewery. We do food trucks. We have rotating food vendors that come through. If you just want to sit on a picnic table and enjoy, like you guys have at Food Truck Tuesdays down in downtown Smyrna, we have that ability. We don't cook food on-site. We aren't a restaurant. We're not restaurateurs. We know what we're good at. We're good at making really good beer, and some of my brewers are here today. And we're actually the most award-winning new brewery since we opened over 19, I think it's 19 medals, both in-state and nationally now. So I won't even talk too much about the beer, but it is really good, and I'll let you guys try it for yourselves. I think what we're here to discuss is, you know, why this location, who we are, and what we can really bring to downtown Smyrna. This is a concept rendering that we have distributed so far. I want to preface that this is not a final rendering. None of this is final, but this is what we have put together with our architects and some of our team in the design. Remember that anything that we end up submitting for approval does have to go through approval process with the Urban Design Commission. So we will be working hand-in-hand, hopefully, with the city of Smyrna and coming up with something that looks and feels like something the community can really be proud of. Our goal is to invest $7 million into this project. It is not a light investment for us, and that's one of the reasons that we are very adamant about owning the space. We hold ourselves to the highest level of excellence and standards, and we want to be able to put something that we're proud of in this space. In Swanee, we had an investment of about $2 million. We were very cost-effective. We tried to make sure that while we wanted it to be vibrant and beautiful and a place we're happy about, that before we had proof of concept, that we weren't going to go under. So this one, now that we know that we can be successful, we're willing to back that up and really give it our all on this one. We want to plant our flag here in downtown Smyrna. We want this to be an iconic place where people talk about it from all over Atlanta, not just in Smyrna. The traffic that we feel we will bring from not just Smyrna residents, but all the way around, is going to lift the tide for all businesses and restaurants and bars in this whole area. On average, people stay for two, three hours. If you don't like the food truck options that we have there, you're welcome to grab a pizza or a bite from Atkins Park and bring it into the brewery. We don't care. We're not, you're not competing with our food. This is a place where we encourage everybody to be involved. I've reached out to Andre at Porchlight about potential food truck concept. I know how much everybody loves that place and it's sad to see it go. I would love to offer that to those guys and say, "Hey, let's have a permanent food truck that's always at Stillfire along with some other rotating ones." These are just some of the things that we do to try to partner with some of the local businesses and restaurants and really make it a community place. And that's the most important thing. I'm going to keep stressing that. We are community, and that's what we want to bring here. We want to bring a place for you and your family, your strollers, your dogs on a leash, please, and come hang out at Stillfire. I would like to dispel a few rumors or misconceptions. Some of you have made the trip out to Swanee from here to come see us over the last couple of weeks, and we really do appreciate that. I encourage anybody that hasn't checked us out online, like Andrea said, to go check us out. You can see a live tour. You can actually click through and walk through our brewery and see the setup itself. If you, even better, come see us and really get a feel, especially on the weekends, the kind of atmosphere that we are trying to create there, because that's exactly what we're trying to do here. We're trying to become a destination. This is an experiential destination, on-premise, live events, live music, good times, good people. This is not a production industrial facility, and I can't stress that enough. While we do produce beer on-site, that is the state law that we have to produce the beer that we sell on-site to be a brewery, that is not our primary business model. 95% of our sales are on-premise. 5% currently are distributed. The little box truck that you guys saw on a previous slide is the size box truck that comes once a week, if we're lucky, to come pick up some beer and take it to retailers through our distributor. The proposed brewery here is about double in size in terms of the floor plan, so you can do the math. The distribution capabilities there... Again, we have to have production equipment there because we have to make everything on-site. That's Georgia and state law. The front of house, all those doors, the walls that you see on the outside are collapsible walls and doors on beautiful days, which we have nine months out of the year here in Georgia, those things open up. It's all indoor/outdoor space. There's no hostess sitting you down in a dingy little booth where you feel separated from the rest of the community. We have big, long tables. We encourage you to stand up, go talk to your neighbors, go walk around, go pet each other's dogs, go outside, play some cornhole, sit by a fire pit. We've got a beer garden with fire pits, picnic tables, lots of outdoor space. That's the name of the game for us. We don't want it to be dark, we don't want it to be secluded. This is about community, hanging out together, indoor/outdoor. We aren't a bar. We don't encourage people to get drunk. We encourage you to have a good time. We close at midnight in Swanee on Fridays and Saturdays and 10 o'clock on the weekdays. This is not a place to go get hammered till 2:00 a.m. This is not a place for 21-year-olds to go get hammered. Again, I'm saving my words here. But that's the atmosphere that we're creating. It is very family-friendly, we have board games. We do, we have homemade craft root beer, non-alcoholic, that we make for the kids. That's the kind of place that we are. This current design ends here on the left side, which would be adjacent to the proposed park that the city would control. The goal there is to work with them, or at least hopefully give some input on our end to say, hey, this is what we've seen works, we have it in Swanee. We have a playground 10 feet off of our patio right now. We host kids' birthday parties, we've had Little League award ceremonies. You know, it doesn't matter what the age is, Johnny down the street is up at the brewery, mommy, daddy, can I please go to the brewery to see Johnny? Yeah, twist my arm, no problem. Like, so I don't want people to feel like this is another bar because it's quite the So with the city's proposed park there off to the left side, we feel like that could create another element, that indoor/outdoor feel, maybe a pet-friendly area, another playground like we have in Swanee. We want to host events, we want to do theme nights, we want to drive traffic to our location. That is our goal, that's our business model. And in turn, we're going to drive traffic hopefully from outside of Smyrna and drive it to the other businesses surrounding us. There will not be six silos. Currently in Swanee, we have one silo, which we purchased this year, we didn't have one when we started. The reason for that was it's much more cost-effective to buy grain in bulk, we do have to make the beer somehow. The silo holds our grain and we take it inside to make our beer when we're making a batch of beer. The silos can range in sizes, heights, looks, feels. Currently in Swanee, we've branded it with our logos, it's a great beacon of marketing for ourselves there. But I've already spoken to Andrea and the city about some possibilities that if we were to put one or two silos there on-site, what we could do. Hey, why don't we reach out to the Art Commission, maybe some local artists in the community? Why don't we do a really cool mural with the public's input? It's not going to be this eyesore that I think some people have in their heads about when you're driving down Atlanta Road. I want it to be actually what you want to see when you're driving down Atlanta Road, something you guys can be proud of as well. And that's my goal there. There are some equipment items, like a silo, that we have to have, but it's not going to be the eyesore that I think some people may have in their heads.
Aaron, can you describe the building itself a little bit with the three stories and what that looks like?
Yeah, the proposed brewery right now is about 20,000 square feet. And before people freak out about the size of that, that's not the floor plan of the brewery. The floor plan of the brewery, the actual space it takes upon the ground is going to be about 12,000 as it currently lays here. The 20,000 comes from the fact that the front of house, the part where you guys will hopefully be able to enjoy, is going to be three levels. So 4,000, 4,000, 4,000, and then a back of house, that's 8,000. That's where that 20,000 number comes from. The goal would be on the first floor to have your prototypical brewery atmosphere like you guys saw in the video at the very beginning of how we have it in Swanee. The second floor, we are proposing, is more of an event space, maybe a little higher-end feel for corporate events, birthday parties, if you want to rent out an area to watch the Georgia Bulldogs, hopefully win the national championship, you may be able to do that. And then the third floor would be more of a rooftop. So not enclosed, be open air, a place where you could, we're talking about maybe making that a 21 and up only area where, hey, I don't want to have to deal with 20,000 kids at the brewery. I can go to the rooftop and enjoy a nice conversation, more intimate feel up there on the rooftop. So that's the floor plan, the three levels, where that square footage comes from. The rest, that 8,000 back house is for our equipment and where we will be making the beer.
Anything else you want me to touch on? One of the things that struck me when the Swanee representatives were here, they talked about, and you mentioned, when you built the facility or revamped that building that they had, that they had a public park next to it and they had plans to get rid of it. Can you talk a little bit about that because I think it speaks to the type of...
Yeah, the park that you guys saw in the video with the playground did not exist as it currently looks in that video when we first took over the property in Swanee. It was a park, it was an underused park, I think it had a gazebo in it, it had an old playground, and it sloped, there was no real activity there, it was in between a police station and the firehouse at the time. There were plans before we ever moved in to actually revamp that park area into more of just a kind of flat surface gateway to another park that they're planning on building right now. We opened up in October of 2019, and within the first month of being opened, the playground that sat there that was very underused, the city came to us and said, that playground has seen more activity in the last month than it saw in 20 years combined. We heard so much feedback from the community, our patrons, other people, just kids that enjoyed going up to the park now because it activated that park. And we said, we need to keep that playground, it's the best part about the brewery. To Swanee's credit, they went back and scrapped their entire plan to renovate that park. They came to us, asked for our input. We renovated the playground, refurbished it, or the city did. They put in a turf grass area for cornhole and the kids to kick the balls around in. And now I seriously think it's the coolest feature about our brewery that anybody can go there, it's a mini babysitter right there. The parents are able to hang on the patio or walk into the park because they do have an open container ordinance there, that they can go push their kid on the swing and enjoy their friends and don't feel like, hey, I can't ever go do anything because I got the kids to take care of. No, the kids want to go there just as much as the parents do. And the city of Swanee recognized that, they helped us out and their citizens by revamping that area, and now that playground is, again, one of the coolest things that we have there.
Andrea, is there anything else that you can think of that we're missing before we move on to the...
Okay.
Okay. So the plant, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, guys.
Aaron will be available for questions at that part of the meeting. Scott's going to talk in just a second about the land sale versus lease, and the plan would be to sell the almost acre to Stillfire for $600,000. That was the number that we put in the letter of intent as kind of a placeholder until we had an appraisal done, because we had just bought five and a half acres right down the street by the Reed House at 600,000 an acre. So we thought that was a pretty good, we thought that was a pretty good placeholder for it. What we'd like to do is use the proceeds from the land sale to help build the park adjacent, right? And that would include a playground, a small stage where you could have some acoustic acts, but it would also have a backdrop as a screen so you could, you know, you could screen Braves games or University of Georgia football, Scott, or anything like that. And then it would have a pet-friendly area up near Atlanta Road. So that's kind of the loose plan. But will you talk, Scott, about the land sale versus the lease, how we achieve the controls that we would achieve with the sale and how that all works?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that in spite of all these gratuitous University of Georgia comments. So one of the, I've been sitting here kind of daydreaming, thinking about this, and one of the problems, personal issues that I see in this, is I'm going to have to acknowledge that I'm getting old. And the way, the reason I've got to do that is because, to put this in context, I think you really need to consider how we did the rest of the Market Village, and I was involved in that. And that was a long time ago, and that proves what I said earlier, that I'm getting a little older. But for the context of what we're looking at over on the site for the brewery, if you look at what we did right here in front of City Hall, you've got similar situations. You've got an area of property that's completely owned, that was at the time completely owned by the city. A lot of people don't realize that, but where Atkins Park and Zuka and Townen Homes and all of the retail establishments and all, all the private property out there was owned by the city when we first started this project. And City Hall was here. And so the idea was, how do we have this private development right next to the city-owned property? And so we went through this concept and came out with a, with the way to make that work, and it won awards, right? And like Andrea said, though, that was 26 years ago, that was a long time ago. And like a lot of things, you know, it's been very successful, but sometimes needs to kind of evolve with the times. And so that's kind of the idea here is, what can we do on this other side that's similar to what we've already established here in the downtown Market Village? So that's kind of the general context that I see for this. So we looked at this, when we're looking at the site where the Market Village, I mean, where the brewery site is, and it's a site that's owned by the public, it is next to other public buildings. Our first idea, or we got, as we were talking about, how do we do this, there was a big concern with, well, we want to make sure that a project this visible, right, in the heart of the downtown, that we have some control over it. So the idea is, well, how do we have control? Well, now we have zoning control already, right? And there's additional control, and Aaron mentioned this, within the downtown area, there's the Urban Design Commission. Those are additional guidelines that apply just to the downtown area. So we have control through zoning, you have control through the urban design guidelines. Well, then our idea was, we can get additional control if we continued on the property, but we lease it to them. And so we met with the guys from Stillfire, and we talked about a lease, and we made the case that we wanted to lease this, or I wanted to look into the idea of a lease because that would give us this control going forward, et cetera, et cetera. And then it's, well, we didn't lease the other property, you know, in front of the Market Village area. And then, you know, Aaron and I, I mean, we heard him. His point was, listen, we're putting a $7 million investment into the downtown, right? And we had arguments, well, you know, there's a lot of properties more expensive than that that are, that are done on the ground lease model. And it was just a non-starter. It was that this is a small, kind of family and friend-owned company, they were putting the biggest single investment in their downtown that anybody's ever put in. I mean, it was more than any of these buildings that have already been built. And they just needed to own this. So then we thought, well, then if our reason that we wanted to look into the lease model was for us to control it, what could we do that would give us comparable controls with the sale? And so with that, we came up with this model, and again, this is very similar to what we did in the downtown market. The downtown Market Village, what we did was we put restrictive covenants on the property. We owned the property, the city owned the property, put restrictive covenants on the property, and then after that, we sold the property to the private development. So the idea over here, the similar model, is we own the property and we deed restrict it, right? And so Aaron and I, who's, he didn't tell you, but he's a lawyer also, smart enough not to practice, but he's a lawyer and a good negotiator. But we, so we sat down over, you know, a few weeks, and we ended up coming up with, through some types of, you know, give and take, we came up with deed restrictions. So the idea would be that in the deed from the government to the private sector, we would have restrictions, so they wouldn't own it outright and be able to do anything they wanted with it. They would be deed restricted going forward. And so we thought that the deed restrictions on top of the regular zoning, on top of the urban design districts gave us a lot of control over it. And the deed restrictions give us control if in the, you know, the unlikely event going forward, that the zoning laws are changed to where something would be permitted there that nobody here today wants, it's still deed restricted, right? So we came up with that model, and then it added to that this right of first refusal. So I don't have any reason to think that these guys are going to come in and immediately get out and sell it to somebody else. But if they did, the city or the Downtown Development Authority would have the right to, basically to purchase it for this, you know, with collars, you know, as to the price and how you establish that and all, we'd have the ability to buy it. So we thought with that model, especially in the context of how we did the rest of the downtown, that we address this concern that we're trying to address through the ground lease model. Did that pretty much cover?
No, I think so. I think, yeah. I'm going to go over a couple of things before we open it up for comments and questions that just came out of the meeting that we had, our work session, I guess it was a week ago Thursday, where the city manager, Marty Allen, from Swanee came down and his assistant city manager, who is also his economic development director, Denise. That has been something that, the specific conversation to the brewery has been put up on our website and our social media and distributed. There are copies near the doors there of the transcript. And I did that because I really thought it was a, a lot of the questions and concerns that the public had had were answered. A couple of the things I wanted to just mention, we talked about the silos already, that it's two, not six. The truck traffic, a lot of people were concerned about, you know, 18-wheelers coming in here. It's, as Aaron said, it's probably about two box trucks a week, that that's not really what they're, that's not really their focus. Odors and noise have been a big, a lot of questions around that. There are not any odors, the noise, the noise questions, there were some issues with the music, I believe, that was played from the facility there. They have residential, very close adjacent, just like we do here across where Williams Park is, and they made adjustments to accommodate and make sure that that, that they weren't annoying the neighbors with noise. We, a lot of discussion about, why aren't they serving food? You're just going to have people coming to get drunk. But the food truck model, we talked a lot about with the Swanee officials about, does that work? And they said, they, it has been such a success in Swanee because you have a different food truck every day of the week or five days a week or whatever it is, and people are now calling to see which food truck it is coming because whether they drink or not, they want to, they want to come and be there when that food truck is there. And what I envision is with the new park and then the new green space, where the roundabouts currently, you know, people that, whether they drink or not, they're still going to be able to go in and have, you know, get some food and enjoy their time outside. One of the things that came up is a lot of folks, oh, this is going to increase DUIs, it's going to increase crime. They said that they had the same concerns. A lot of these were concerns, all of these that we had. Marty's quote was, Taco Bell has had more calls since Stillfire started than Stillfire has. They just haven't seen any increase in crime or DUIs at all. We asked, are they a good community partner? And they just went on and on about their partnership and that they have their foundation and the things that they do for the community, and I'm sure you'll be asked and can maybe talk a little bit more about that. We were asked, are they, is it locally owned or venture capitalists that are going to come in and then, you know, sell it? He spoke to that a little bit, but it's a, it's a very small group of folks, family and friends that own this, and he's living here now. Why not another location? You know, Andrea talked about that this is the location that they sought us out, we, as a council, as an elected body, wanted to pursue that a little bit further. So that's why we're where we are. There is no other location on the table, this is it, this is what will be voted on when the time is right. And, you know, from my perspective, this is an economic development driver and will be hopefully a huge success. We talked about the architecture, it's been asked, are we giving these guys incentives? We, you know, we're giving them tax abatements and all that. No, we're not. We're not giving them any incentives to come here because they're confident enough they're going to make, have a successful business. There's been questions about environmental study. There hasn't been an environmental study, how can you do this? Well, we have an environmental Phase 1 study almost complete, and it'll be available to vote, I think this week, Scott, if I'm not mistaken. But, so that has been underway and is almost finished. The DDA meeting, that's the Downtown Development Authority, met on... enough they're gonna make, have a successful business. There's been questions about environmental study. There hasn't been an environmental study. How can you do this? Well, we have an environmental phase one study almost complete and it'll be available to vote, I think this week, Scott, if I'm not mistaken. But, so that, that is, that has been underway and is almost finished. The DDA meeting, that's the Downtown Development Authority on, met on Friday, and they voted six to one to convey the land to Stillfire contingent on the, the council's approval of the terms of the contract. And right now, there are, I'd say 99% of the land, even maybe more, is in the DDA's control. There are two out parcels, two little slivers that are, that are not. And so when we vote on this, the, the way it would work is you'd, you'd convey those two slivers to the DDA and then they convey it to Stillfire if it went forward. The proximity to the Baptist church and to the school, we're, we, that's been looked at every which way and we are within the legal distance requirements for both. Most recently, the school, Smyrna Prep, that exists in the building right there by the roundabout has, has come up. I'll remind everybody, you know, Porchlight had a liquor license and they were right below them. The bourbon and cigar bar is closer than the, than the brewery would be. Concerns about the traffic study. You know, you did a traffic study talking about a 15,000 square foot commercial space. Well, as Aaron said, it's gonna be 20,000, but 8,000 of that is gonna be production. So you're actually talking about the, the, the actual retail space is going to be less. You know, it'll be 12, which is less than 15. So they, going back to the traffic study folks, they said that the impact, the 15,000 commercial space would actually be more traffic than this will, than this will generate. We talked about the land sale. Scott, I'd like you to talk just a minute about the appraisal because we, like I said, we went back and got an appraisal. The, I think the, the range was somewhere 588 to 610, but talk, talk about how we got that appraiser and how they did that, please.
Yeah, um, yeah, we, we got an appraisal of the entire site, knowing that we were, we would determine which part of the site to convey if it moves forward. And so we got the entire site and, uh, like you said, there's a range. And the bottom line, it was the, the midpoint between the, in the range was just under 600,000 per acre. And the appraiser was an MAI appraiser who does work. You know, I've, I've tried a jury trial with him, asked the expert witness before. He's been qualified in court to do that, so he's a good appraiser.
Thank you. The businesses downtown, Atkins Park, the, all that I've, I've spoken with, which is almost all of them, everybody is in favor of this. They think it'll be a rising tide. They think more people will come to our downtown and increase their business. One of which sits on the Downtown Development Authority, Kevin Draw, and does some business, I guess, with Stout Brothers. It was, was overly excited about the possibility of these guys coming in. And then the one thing that the, the Swanee folks said that really resonated was most of their folks who may have been against this at the beginning, but have seen how it's been now, the, the, the non-drinkers are some of their biggest supporters. And that really hit home with me that this, that, that the environment that they're trying to create is, is, has turned out to be exactly what they're, they're talking about. So the, hopefully going through that will, will answer some questions that y'all may have. I'd encourage you, if you haven't, go to the, the city's social media and find that link and, or take a transcript with you and just, and read it. That's all I have. What I'd like to do, I think, for the comments and questions, since we have people in here and outside in the rooms and in the lobby, we'll just ask you, if you'd like to speak or ask a question, and Aaron and Andrea will be here to, to do that and Scott, come up to either this mic up front or that mic in the middle there and then state your name, your address, and then make your comments. We ask that you keep them to a minute or less. We've got so many folks here, but we'll go ahead and begin that process now. So if you'd like to speak, come on up to either microphone and you can, y'all can just form a line. That'll allow folks who are outside to come in and then if, people are free to come and go as, as they like now. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Deal. I live in Smyrna. My wife works at the Keller Williams down the road. We actually live in the Vinings Forest community, right across from Taylor Bronner. My daughter is a first grader at Teasley Elementary. I am a professional musician. I play piano and sing. We do dueling pianos and solo piano gigs all around Atlanta. I don't really do, I wouldn't say I'm a local musician. All my work is around the, or area and the surrounding area. We do breweries, we do bars, we do restaurants, we do wedding events. You name it, we do it. So, uh, we actually have performed at Swanee and we, we do pretty regularly. I've performed there maybe six times in the last year. When I heard that the brewery is gonna be coming here, I was ecstatic. I was excited just to see, cause I know what kind of life it brings, what the brewery does to like, it kind of is catalyst for all the businesses around it. I personally am a non-drinker. I don't drink alcohol. And I know Aaron mentioned they have the root beer, which is for the kids, but that's actually for me. I've had much of the root beer. It's awesome, not too sweet. I am 100% for this. I'd love to see, like, the life come to the community. I've seen the age range that it spans. Like, I would bring my kid there, my wife there, my parents there. Anybody here, I think, could enjoy it in some way or another. So that's my two cents.
Thank you for your comments. We'll go to the back of the middle microphone now. Go ahead and say your name and where you live.
Hey, Mayor Norton, PJ Protos.
Is that on? Can anybody hear?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Let's make sure that's on.
It's on, okay. PJ Protos, I also live in Smyrna, actually within walking distance of here. Definitely for the brewery, however, I do have a couple of questions about the, the concept. You know, I've been to plenty of breweries here in Georgia, North Carolina, up in New England where my wife is from. So my question is the concept of the three stories. I, you know, most breweries I've been to have been that community space where you want to get together. And it seems with, especially the 21 and up is what concerns me, like you're intentionally trying to split the community up by having those multiple levels as opposed to having either one level or two. And the second thing is, you know, from a business standpoint, if you build it too big and you can't fill it, you know, it's tougher on you guys to, to keep it running.
Yeah, absolutely. Totally understand those concerns. We have the same concerns, especially about the size and scope of the building. I can tell you now that it's not gonna be any bigger than that and we've already had internal conversations and we're rethinking exactly how big do we want to make this, including, do we need three stories? Maybe we need one with a rooftop to that exact point. Bigger it is, the more space we have to fill and the more likely chance that we don't succeed, right? Especially a private event space, you know, I gotta have events going on all the time to justify that, that area. So we're looking at all those possibilities. We thought it would be a good idea. The one thing we don't have in Swanee is a real discernible event space. We do have inquiries all the time and unfortunately, because it is such a open, one-floor brewery that somebody wants to rent half the brewery on a Saturday, we're just not able to do it right now. So whether that's a second floor or we relook at it and do the floor plan in a different way to maybe be able to carve off some areas for private events, those are things we're looking at. And that, so I, I, I second that concern. As far as the delineation of the ages, one of the major feedbacks we get from our community there in Swanee is while there is a ton of family-friendly atmosphere there, there are also people that want to get away from their kids when they come up to the brewery and have a beer. And right now in Swanee, because it's all together, nobody's able to kind of split that or get away from that area. The rooftop, again, that's a proposal, something we have in our minds. Maybe we want to do it to where that rooftop is 21 and up only. It's not set in stone. And I would actually love to hear more from you guys about the thoughts about splitting that up.
Have you been to a brewery that has a model that has a 21 and up? I figure if you have those 21s and up around a bunch of kids and dogs, maybe they behave a little bit better as opposed to them being on their own.
Yeah, we have no issue with the people that come without kids at the current brewery. Again, it's an idea that we've had. Do people want to see that? And, and we are flexible and we want to take opinions like this honestly and we're willing to work on that. And that's actually something that if we do it at first and we don't like it, it's very easily fixable. We just say, okay, this is not working. This is not giving us the effect that we want because it's really about the ambiance, the atmosphere and that family-friendly atmosphere. And if all of a sudden it feels like it's a split and we got a bunch of drunks up on the fir, second floor, I'll scrap that immediately because that is not our business model. That's not the atmosphere we're trying to create.
Thank you.
Okay, first microphone here.
Hello, my name is Paula Vincent. I live in Ward Four and I represent at least 30 neighbors. They're citizens of Smyrna. And I join with those Smyrna citizens and other neighbors to strongly oppose, this is a highly contentious proposed sale of the downtown Smyrna Village Green Public Land. This one acre land is part of the gateway to Smyrna, which impacts the image and the culture of our city. And I like beer. I have no problem with beer. I have no problem with you. I just don't like the location. I'm sorry. No new beer factory should be built on the peaceful sober land area where children, teens, families, elderly, church and schoolgoers all play, reside, exercise, walk bikes, push baby carriages, participate in events and fairs. This is a location where all citizens enjoy connecting to build the community right now. Citizens have unaddressed concerns about the environmental impact on nearby homes and businesses. What level of continuous noise pollution, light pollution, rats and other real, real issues are going to be caused by an open-air beer factory and operations, live music bands, DJs bingo and trivia, parties, big events and food truck generators every single day? And what level of noise, rats and lights are the city and nearby 86-plus homeowners and businesses willing to accept coming from this beer factory? That, which is going to have 1,000 to 2,000 people a week in, in, right there in that location? Is this something that the Smyrna citizens are willing to put up with?
I'm almost at two minutes. I might have to ask you to wrap it up if you want.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
This beer factory can locate to an industrial zone elsewhere. Smyrna has already set the precedent by permitting the two other beer production factories in appropriate industrial zones away from this neighborhood area, away from where the library is, quiet areas, parks, where kids are, churches, things like that.
Okay, ma'am, you're over two minutes. We're gonna have to go on to the next one. Thank you so much. Yes, sir, in the back.
My name is Mike Klosterman. I live in Ward Five. I am not against the brewery, but I'm just against the location. There are six establishments right now within a quarter of a mile that sell alcohol. And if you go a little bit farther, you get to Cretewood and some of the other establishments. So I think there's enough places to buy booze. She mentioned the, that's a pretty good picture for those who are against the brewery. That's a picture of what won the award here in Smyrna. And I've been here since 99 and it, it has a hometown feel to it, like the major events, the art in the park and the Fourth of July celebration that we do the first Saturday of August. You look at, there's 50, 60,000 people there, you know? It has small-town feel even though it's in a big city. I know you say it isn't a bar, but the gentleman claimed that 95% of the income comes from the patrons. And I'm sure the largest percentage is not root beer. And right now there are, you haven't done a traffic study and you'd be removing, you're making whatever that street is flow on the, the west side of the distillery. Right now there is no traffic light at Village Green Circle. There's no traffic light at Powder Spring, Powder Spring Street. There would have to be a light added.
There is one coming at Powder Springs, yes, sir.
Okay, well, you've eliminated a lot of parking at the community center and I don't know, I'm, I'm a victim of windy hill. I'll say it that way. We were told it'd be 30 months. It's been a year and a half at least, maybe two years, and now they're saying two to three more years to finish the project, okay? So I'm, I'm interested in the timing, that street that would have to go on the west side of the brewery and the park, you know, redoing the, the roundabout and all that. What's, what's, what would the sequence events that you would propose because?
So we're almost, we're over two minutes again, so if we can wrap it up, please.
Okay, but finish one thing before you start another, is what I'm saying.
Y'all, please keep within the two minutes. In order to have everybody speak, we really need y'all to be respectful of other people's time, please. The first microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Barb McQuethy. I live in Ward One. I'm here in support of the brewery. I've been to several of these type of establishments through Georgia as well as in other states. I have always found them to be family-friendly. I've gone to some great events, especially the most recent event was pre-COVID, unfortunately. But it was a benefit concert for Children's Healthcare of Atlanta for pediatric cancer research at Glover Park Brewery. It was very well-attended. Speaking to your community events and trying to find space, they have that capability there with the two different floors where the, the, I guess what you'd call the ground floor was closed off for the event that night, but yet it could still be opened, the outside area downstairs. People could flow back and forth, so there are ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The middle microphone in the back, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Ryan Taylor. I'm a Ward Six resident. I don't care about the brewery. I'm speaking only against the premise that we can't have a ground lease for the property, right? That it has to be sold. So the deed restrictions that were mentioned by the city attorney really are not the issue. We can restrict it as we need to and I think the market will determine what's gonna be on that property, whether it's successful or not. We have plenty of control there. My concern is the idea that we have some security.
Excuse me, can you speak in the microphone? Cause I can't hear you and I really would like to hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Certainly. We have a microphone here for short people.
Vertically challenged, sir.
Whatever you want to call it, whatever's politically correct. I'm, I'm merely speaking against the idea that we cannot have a ground lease and be successful there. So there are a, a number of things that were provided to us in the testimony here earlier that we would have deed restrictions, for example, that would give us protection about what the use of the property is. I don't think that's an issue. My concern is that this idea of repurchase agreement, that we would buy the property back if we decided that we needed to use it, is false. And I've seen this fail in a number of, of situations. It's a unique property. It's next to our community center. It's the only one, the only location where we can expand our uses. Smyrna's population is increasing, so our need for that property is increasing, yet from day one, it would cost us $6.1 million to reacquire that property. That number's only gonna go up. And so this idea that a repurchase agreement is gonna protect us means we're probably gonna learn what churches and other groups learned, that once you let this property go, you can't afford to buy it back when you intend to. So it's out of your control at that point.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Monsa Ryan Olton. I live in Ward Five at Poplar Point, Smyrna. And the beer factory is not an issue about a business who wants to open shop in Smyrna. The applied process has been different. Even tonight, at every single meeting that I've been to, you, Mr. Mayor, have been selling more than the people from the, from the beer factory. This has been a redesigning of the entire downtown to place this beer factory in it. I am not opposed to a business like that, but this is the wrong location. It shouldn't be across from the community center. This is a special place for children to go learn, physical education and other things. Stillfire location in Swanee might suit the needs of Swanee. They are a more rural area and they are a different kind of population. Their population of 20,000 is less selective than the people in Smyrna. We, every time that I attend one of these meetings, Stillfire does not want, talk about everything. Like tonight, he didn't talk about, it's not only a brewery, it's also a place where liquor is gonna be made and liquor is gonna be sold on the top floor. They have not talked about that.
If you'd, if you'd like to address that, Aaron?
We only make beer in the brewery in Swanee. A lot of breweries around metro Atlanta, it is a trend that they are adding a distillery component. The reason for that being is that there are a lot of people that wish to enjoy the brewery that don't like beer. So a lot of these other breweries are providing another option. We have looked into it. It is not final. If we did decide or wanted to decide, we would have to get a license and it would have to be approved by the city. If we did provide that, we would have to make it on-site. We would do mixed cocktails at a controllable alcohol limit to control serving sizes, again, as an option to customers and residents that don't like beer but still wish to engage and be at the brewery.
Thank you. Okay.
This has not been explained at other meetings that way, but you know, it is what it is. So if that's what he's saying, that they are not producing it in, in Swanee, I'll take it as such.
Okay, yes, ma'am, you're, you're, you're over two minutes. Can you wrap up?
I'm sorry, I had to let him speak.
Well, it was, okay.
I am 71 years old. I lived in Smyrna for 28 years. I love the town. I love the town. I don't have any relatives here in this town. I don't have any relatives here in this town. My relatives are either in Europe, or they are up north in New England, okay? I stayed here after my retirement. I own a house in Florida, I'm not retiring, in Florida. I like Smyrna, and I want the best for Smyrna. And this brewery is not the best for Smyrna, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Microphone in the back, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Priya Misra.
Now, let's have some respect of everybody in here, please. Let's have some decorum. If the gentleman, sorry, you were interrupted, go ahead and start, restart his-
Yeah, all I said was my name. In any event, Mr. Mayor, I have lived in Smyrna since 1969, raised three kids here, have seen a lot of changes. And when I first heard about the beer, you say eight months? I think it might have been nine or 10 months. I'm not particularly opposed to the brewery, but my goodness, that location is beautiful. That location should not be a location for a brewery. And for some artful reason, none of you showed the damn parking lot. There's gonna be a parking lot close to the brewery. Where the heck is it?
I'll go ahead and answer.
Okay, and that's gonna be an eyesore.
Are you asking that question that you'd like me to answer?
No, 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 no. Let me finish my comments, then you can have the floor, sir.
I was just trying to answer your question, that's all.
Please wait. The other thing is, I have seen studies, there's no one here from the clergy, there's no one here from the medical community, to bring children into a brewery and to think it's not gonna lead to alcoholism among the young? That's asinine. I mean, there have been so many studies in Europe, so many studies in the U.S. to show young children around any kind of alcohol lead to alcoholism. Now, where is a good place to put this brewery? Put it next to the Reed House. He just bought six acres. Now, you know, you have so much money coming in from SPOLOST, from taxes, the city is just overflowing with cash. Why don't you do something constructive with it? If the brewery goes in, in the present location, I can assure you, the elected officials of the city of Smyrna who support this brewery will not be coming back at the next election.
Thank you for your comments. I will address the parking deck since he asked. The parking deck was approved with SPOLOST long before anybody knew anything about Stillfire. That will go in the space between the, it's already been approved, the space between the church and the police station. So that's the answer there. And then you mentioned that there's nobody here from the clergy. I see my pastor sitting in here. I know the, I think I saw Pastor Pennington, whether he's in this room or not, but I don't know whether you want to address at some point some of those comments. Please get in line and come up here, and I'm sure, I mean, they might let you in line early. Did you want to say something?
Mayor.
We actually have church service on Sundays at the brewery in Swanee. The Phoenix Community of Atlanta, they lease out, they don't lease out, they are given the space every Sunday morning. It's a non-denominational church. They come every Sunday morning, they set up, they have their church service, and then we come in, they hang out, they have their coffee, and then they leave. And it's such a great relationship. It's a Phoenix Community of Atlanta. If you want to ask somebody from the church side of things, ask them how our relationship is and how we can contribute to that community as well.
Thank you. Microphone one, please.
So, Mayor, when you get a chance-
Hi, I am Laura Feaster, and this is my husband Cody Feaster. We moved to Smyrna earlier this year. So we are new residents, but that doesn't mean we love Smyrna any less. We saw so much potential in this city, and we moved from this heart of Atlanta, and we didn't want to move to the burbs. We didn't want to move out where there wasn't things to do, and, but we just fell in love with Smyrna. We fell in love with the downtown, and we walk here. To speak on the walkability, we walk here from our home. I go to run club on Mondays. I would love to be able to walk to a brewery, walk home, bring my nieces and nephews with me, bring my dog, who is basically my child. And I just see so much potential, and that's what our friends see too that are our age. We're in our late twenties. They come here and they're like, wow, this city has potential. This city can become so much more than it is. And I see that happening through a brewery and other businesses that can come to Village the Market, and I'm just really excited for this, and think it'll be great for our town.
Microphone in the middle, please.
Hi there, Johnny Rayner, Ward Seven. As a father of two young children and a churchgoer, I just wanted to say that I'm fully in support of the proposed brewery. Anytime that we go to visit our friends, we grew up in Woodstock, and it's unrecognizable downtown. Before, it was just the Ace Hardware, the Morgan's Ace Hardware, and a dentist shop, and that was pretty much it. And it's completely boomed since then. You see thousands of people out there every weekend. It's a wonderful place with parks and spread out, and it's just a great place to bring your family and hang out and fellowship. So I just wanted to say that I really am in support of this because I think it's a beautiful thing to come to downtown Smyrna, because it's a great place for my two daughters to have a place to run, and, you know, no offense to the rundown train playground over there, but something new would be amazing to have them just go around, run, and be nuts. So, thank you.
This microphone, please.
Cody Feaster, also down the street with my wife, obviously. I just wanted to say we've talked a lot about community, and one thing we've noticed from moving here is the downtown, in my mind, should be the center of community, but I don't feel currently that there's a place, it's a central hub for me to go meet neighbors and friends and bring pets to. There are smaller places, but there's not a central place for me to go have a big event with the whole neighborhood or my entire street. I think the brewery brings that for us. I think it gives us that central community, and I think if we look past the fact that it's called a brewery, it's a community center. It's a revitalized community center that we should have for people to go and hang out and bring their kids and pets. So I'm 100% for it.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir, in the middle microphone, please.
Is it me?
Yes, sir.
Cool, I'm Mark McPhee. I live on Nickel Street with my wife, around the corner here. Moved here, my wife and I, 10 years ago with no kids, and now we have two of them that we walk down to the library every week. Speaking of the changes that have happened, we couldn't afford to live where we do anymore because it's changed so much. I'm not a big beer guy. I was actually hoping for the distillery to get me to some Georgia games because all my friends are always in the beer breweries all the time, so I'm actually sorry to hear that's not happening. My thing is I came here kind of on the fence because I heard, man, selling public parkland to do a brewery doesn't seem cool, but let's hear and see how it goes. And seeing the presentation, it makes sense because, I mean, God, I came from Kennesaw, and their downtown is kind of getting up there better. Woodstock's improving. And when we moved here to Smyrna, it was pretty sleepy, you know, like a cable operation is one of the storefronts, and that's why when looking at the example of the downtown as, hey, look how we did this, it was private, or it's now private, that seems like a little bit less of a selling point because it seems like, I don't know if the rent's too high or whatever, but it's been pretty sleepy, and we've been trying to walk down here with friends and family for years, and it's like, hey, you got a couple restaurants, and that's it. So that, I guess my thing is for those of us in the middle that hopefully aren't gonna get clapped by either side, because it seems like it makes sense, three stories seems like a bit of a stretch, because I think we need the space. If Kennesaw has two, we should at least have one. But hearing the booster isn't from elected officials and such, is there anything you can tell us, what did you not give them? Was there anything that you faulted them on? I don't know if it's confidential or whatever, but maybe it'll make people feel better that are just like, hey, this seems like a good idea, but maybe this, because I think there were good points made about not selling the land. Is there something that they wanted, and you said, no, 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 we need to not do that because it sounds like they're getting everything in the world?
Scott, do you want to, do you want to address, I mean, I can't think of anything that they asked for that, I don't know-
Sure. You know, this is public property going on the tax digest, so we didn't give them tax incentives, you know, and we didn't structure it in such a way that it would stay off the tax digest. So that's a financial issue. They, there was talk at one point about other concessions that we sometimes give people that come in with new development. Smyrna Grove, we gave, and it's forced building permits and that. At one point, we had talked about that, and that, we've kind of renegotiated that, so that's not happening either. So there, and all those are financial things, but there are some financial things that were asked for that weren't given, you know? And also, the price, the original price that, when they came in, the price for the property that they initially proposed was not what the agreement is. It's a lot less.
So, yeah, I think you guys did a great job. Thanks.
All right, this first microphone.
Hi, my name is Mark Ogilvy. I'm a 21-year Smyrna resident and also a business owner, and I have to consider both needs as a resident and a business owner. I want the Market Village to thrive, and I'm open to ideas to get it to expand, to grow. My business has a stake in it as well as my personal time, but I'm also a user of the community center, and the parcel of land fronting our community center is in effect a land trust. That land belongs more to our children than it does to us. As Smyrna grows, so grows the need for meeting space at our community center for clubs, civic groups, town hall gatherings, individual sports, fitness training, as well as team sports. At times, we're already maxing out the parking spaces and event space. When I had to weigh the needs of my private life and my personal life, my vote had to come down on the side of the potential for expansion of the community center. We need that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back. The middle microphone, please. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Dave Lincoln, 2860 Parkwood Road. I'd like to just read something quickly. May be familiar to many of you. We need supporters of the brewery to come to Town Hall Sunday. It starts at 2:00 p.m. at the City Hall, and we are asking supporters to be there at 1:30 to pack the room with support. We'll have green yes signs. Can we count on you to be there and help us across the finish line? The council needs to hear support. If you reply, Derek Norton will also be able to call you and see, see info, like your active status and when your message has been read. Now, I think the mayor, I thought that was a nonpartisan position, and what I guess a lot of us have not realized is that we elected a lobbyist for Stillfire Brewery. I mean, how did that happen? So now, now we have an inside job. What we have here is an inside job by a professional lobbyist to get Stillfire into a prime spot. They love it. They're gonna take over. It's the kind of thing where in Swanee, they're not in the public space. They're outside of that. Here, shame on them to come in, push their way into our public park space, cause this divisive issue, when there's plenty of great locations that they can be right here in Smyrna. They do not need to be in our public park space, period. Thank you very much.
Since you directed your comments at me, I am going to take a minute to respond. I am elected to do what I think is best for the city of Smyrna and put forward ideas that I think is best for the city, and that's exactly what I'm trying to do here, because I think it will be such an economic driver. I think it will be such a benefit to our community. And I recognize what you read because I wrote it, and I think that a lot of times when there's folks who are against something, it's, they're always louder than the folks who are supportive. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to come and express their support, that I've been saying for weeks, I believe, and I've heard from folks, that this is a widely supported effort, right? Please, I've given y'all respect, please give me respect as well, okay? And so it's, I wanted folks to come here that, and know about this meeting, who support this, and I think it's clear today by the outpouring of folks who have come, on both sides, but everybody's involved, and that, and I did do that, and I'm, it's no different from other councilmen, you know, Mr. Welsh trying to postpone the vote, and it's no different than anybody else. And to accuse me of some kind of inside job, I didn't meet these guys until Andrea brought them to us. In fact, we had a, kind of a funny conversation, Aaron and I. I've seen online and been accused, hey, these are my college buddies from Georgia, and he quickly pointed out that he was 20 years after me. I didn't really like that very much, but, so to question integrity or the reasoning behind what we're trying to do, I do think this is a good idea, and I am gonna push for it because I think it's best for our city. That's what I was elected to do. Thank you. Microphone one, please. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Richard Patcher, 2667 Brown Circle, 47-year resident of Smyrna. There's a question at the end of this, by the way. First of all, I'm amazed that all of these, now compared to me, young, and I know they're very astute and very environmental people, want to put a playground next to a four-lane highway that's not the best air to breathe for let alone children, and let alone even any of the rest of us. It's not environmental at all. Now, in ordinances, I don't think the city has mentioned, because there's seven ordinances, and I'm assuming some of them apply to this brewery, one of them does, that there are seven different ordinances for establishments like theirs, and they're all different distances, depending on what the city says, what they feel, what they want, whether they own the land or they don't own their land, and by the way, that church was there 50 years before the city owned any of that land. But, so ordinance seven reduces that. The city does not say that there are different ordinances. They care more about some children than other children, some churches than other churches, some parks than others, some libraries than others, because the distances are all different. There's seven different ones recently. So I wonder whether, you know, in anything, that the church is less than 50 yards away, property line to property line from this thing. The park, less than 200 yards. The community center, where thousands of children come through on a yearly basis, less than 100 yards. A voting poll, less than 100 yards. And I know it might be door-to-door, but ordinance seven, first of all, when was it added to the ordinances that reduced the distance to a church or a park from 300 to 200, when was it added, and how do you measure that? I'm sure it's door-to-door, but depends where you put the door. The brewery can have a door on one side, but it's also got the delivery thing on the other side.
Okay.
So that's, and by the way, I don't deny the success. It will be successful, I'm sure. It will be monetarily and economically. I don't think it's the right place at all.
Scott, you want to address the ordinance and the distance?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but I, yeah, I'll kind of explain-
Does an ordinance apply to this? Any ordinance apply to this brewery?
Yeah, there's state laws apply to this and city ordinances apply to this. They both deal with regulation of alcohol.
Does one preclude the other or one override the other, as far as state and city?
Let me try to make a stab, and then how about you follow up, because I'll lose my train of thought otherwise. So, yeah, there's two sets of rules. The state has its set of rules, and the locals have their set of rules, okay? Generally speaking, the state yields to the city for sales of alcohol to be consumed on premises, right? And so that's how you get to situations like the mayor mentioned earlier, where under the same roof, you had a licensee selling alcohol, Port Light, and above that, a church, under the same roof. Under the same roof, you also had a licensee selling alcohol and a daycare, right? So those were allowed because those dealt with alcohol to be consumed on the premises, and the state basically yields to the local government for those types of sales, right? And so within this, so that's the state, the big issue is alcohol to be consumed on premises. The city has its set of ordinances that are different, and this is very common among governments that have mixed-use areas, right? So the rules are different in mixed-use areas and areas within the downtown, it had been for years, than they are in the city at large. And that is because the zoning of the mixed-use areas is you're trying to get multiuses under one building. You've got, or in one development, and that's why you've got places like Belmont, which is zoned mixed-use. You've got places with licenses, and you've got a school there, and you've got residences and all that, that sort of thing. So the city has updated its alcohol ordinances frequently based on new businesses coming into the Market Village. We did it for, first for the wine store here. When the wine store came in, they wouldn't have been allowed under our ordinances. We sat down with everybody and we worked it so that they could go in there. It's been a big success. We did the same thing for the growler store. There's another, so we have gradually upgraded our ordinances that we could, that the state didn't preempt us on, in order to accommodate new businesses in the area. So that's what we've done. Now, in this situation, would we have to or not? It depends on ultimately what they, what it is they try to do, and it's early on that yet, but there's a chance that we would, just like we've done it for some of the other businesses.
So when, so, when was ordinance seven put in? And you're also saying then that you care, the city cares about some schools and children and some churches more than others, because it's a different ordinance from one through seven. Seven is the last one that was put in, and seven says-
We'll track down ordinance seven, the timing for you, and get that answered back to you.
Yeah, I don't have any idea what seven is, but I know the most recent ordinance- Yeah, I don't have any idea what seven is, but I, I know the most recent ordinance revision for the Market Village...
It was revised probably after the city required all this land. The ordinance seven didn't exist, you know, prior to that. I know that.
That's 30 years ago.
26 years ago, she said.
No, it was in 1990, is, is, I, I did a lot of that.
Time is up, and courtesy is not. I'm still asking the question. I haven't got the answer from my question.
We will find that answer.
Courtesy exists.
We will find that answer for you about when that...
And what, I asked, I did ask, what is, you know, on the ordinance? You know, it says distance. So that church, which I said precluded by 50 years, any of the city property, is 50 yards away, property line to property line. I don't think it's measured like that. How do you measure that to require it to fall, whether the ordinance is 100 yards, 200 or 300 or 100 yards? How do you measure that?
In the downtown, we've got ordinances that, that designate how you measure. In the downtown area, you measure from the front door of the licensed establishment to crosswalks.
That makes sense.
And if you have to cross roads, or if there's obstacles, you go, you measure around the obstacles, across the crosswalk. It's not as a crowfied.
Right.
It's, 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 it's the most normal legal route of pedestrian travel.
So if there's two doors, and one door is on the backside to bring in the trucks and the hops and all that to brew it, that door doesn't count. Only the door on the other side counts.
It's the main door.
Well, just the main door.
I mean, the way it says, I mean, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the ordinance.
The ordinance doesn't say that.
Yeah, ducks, yeah, the ordinance, yeah.
I mean, you know more than I do, but it doesn't say, ordinance seven doesn't say anything. Ordinance one through seven doesn't, not about this.
Listen, we're going to get, we're going to move on to our next speaker, and, and, you know. Yes, sir. The middle microphone, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Evan Sturgis. I live in Ward Three. Travis, thanks for all your hard work. My wife and I and son have been in Smyrna for a little over four years now. You know, I'd like to start off by saying, you know, I think all of our elected officials, I don't think anybody's lobbying for Stillfire, but perhaps a better community and, you know, a better Smyrna. So we are definitely here in support of the brewery, or the beer factory, whatever that is. But, you know, we, we see this as a, a, a real sense of community, and it's something that Smyrna's lacking, they've been lacking for a long time. And, you know, I think Smyrna's at a point where they're at a crossroad, and it's, it's time to adapt or, or die. And all the other communities around us, Roswell, Alpharetta, Woodstock, everybody's moving forward, and they're focusing a lot of this on sense of community gathering and the people that live here. So we are definitely in support of it, and I think that everybody can work together to find common ground on this. Thank you. Thank you.
Don McWethey, my old neighbor. Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah, I'm Don McWethey. I live in Ward One. My wife spoke a little bit ago. I'm a big supporter of it, the mayor. I'm a big supporter of, you, you did nothing wrong. I think you, you are right. You're a booster for the city. You're not nonpartisan. You don't care what happens. You're a booster for the city. And I am a huge supporter of this. I would like to see the third floor, just because I like to be up on a roof. It can be all ages, I don't care, but I like the rooftop dynamic. Calling it a beer factory doesn't change anything, and, and it's not accurate either. I have a question about the, the, people calling it parkland. Since nothing, it was, it seems that it was set aside for some future use. Is it actually legally parkland?
Every, every, and Scott, you were around when this was done, with, you were with the city when this was done. Every rendering that I've seen, and, and there are some examples here, have some structure, some retail, some, there was one that even had it as the site for the police station, but something was, was planned on that.
It's always been planned for some sort of development.
Some structure, yes.
It is not taking a park away. It was a site planned for development.
That's, that's, that's correct.
And I think this is an excellent development.
Thank you. So y'all, we are, we are at 3:47. I'm, I'm good to go until 4:00, and then we'll, we'll have to shut down unless, I, I think we can't go much longer than that. So if you haven't had a chance to speak but wanted to, please send your comments in, email us. Please come, the, the vote will be announced shortly. It'll be in the next several weeks. So we'll, we'll go till 4 o'clock, which is another 12, 13 minutes, and then, then we'll close her down. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Kyle Cook. My wife Jessica and I live within walking distance here of the Market Village. We moved here back in 2016. The Braves Stadium wasn't built yet. The Publix John Quill Shopping Center there was an abandoned construction site. A lot of changes has happened. I think everybody can agree, all those are good changes. I, I think one of the things that the Smyrna Market Village here is lacking is there's not an anchor tenant there. There's not one big establishment that you can say, oh, yeah, you know where so-and-so is. That's it. I think that Stillfire Brewery is the perfect anchor tenant for this, and we look forward to having them here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Tanya. I live in Ward Five, Susan's Ward. And I've lived here in Cobb County since 85 in Smyrna, because I wanted to, since 2005, and I moved closer to, closer to the downtown area, because I love it. So the brewery concept has been an issue for me. I, I applaud you for the work you've done today. I'm not so worried about the silos anymore. And the, the one acre is for the brewery, the 4.8 is for the city. I love that. Of, I'm not thrilled about the brewery as a, as a community center. It's hard for me to hear about it as an anchor. So I'm wondering if you all would speak a little bit about what we may do with the rest of the 4.8 acres to, to be more of the community center that some of us are talking about.
So I think the numbers are, it's an acre would be Stillfire, and then .4 acre is the other part of that. So, so what that's planned to be is the city park, that, so it'd be adjacent to all that we're doing where the current roundabout is. So that, that's, that's, it'll become a public park and gathering space there.
Okay. I'm just hoping that we can, as a community, work more on, on a community center field. Expand the community center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Pierre Penda.
You can pick up that microphone, so you don't have to bend down.
Yeah, I, I live right behind the building on Bank Street here. So it appears to me that some people who are against this project would rather see that space vacant. So have you received any better ideas from anybody? So that's my first question. And my second question is, if approved, when will construction begin and end?
I've had that question before. They came to us, I believe, in March or April, and then folks have said along the way, well, how, you know, is there any, has there been any other interest? There, there have been a couple of soft inquiries, but nothing, no concrete proposals, no, nothing like that to speak of. And Aaron, you can probably answer the question about construction better than I can.
Depends when it gets approved. Now, we, we would be able to break ground, hopefully, if things go according to plan in the spring of the new year. With the way that supply chain and material costs are right now, we like to be conservative, and we would hope to open by the spring of 2023. If things go much better than that, there's a possibility of next fall opening, if things continue in a manner that suits us, so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, this first microphone here.
My name is Donna Elkhayam. I'm in Ward Five, and I'm a former school teacher and advocate for healthy food and community gardens, and all things healthy. And I'm just very concerned about having this brewery right next to where a lot of children are taking classes. And the open carry means that people will be drinking around, the kids coming and going into the center, and around the children's library, and then there's the preschool, and it just seems very inappropriate. So I just, I'm hoping that the location could be moved. Also, I don't know what the ingredients are in the beer, and I know that, like, on responsibletechnology.org, they talk about how GMOs cause over 60 illnesses. I think there's like three documentary films on that website, and I'm just curious about what the ingredients are in the beer, and if the beer is non-GMO. So the other thing is that I understand that, that they're asking for $4 million to build the, the parking deck, which will be where the parking lot is now for the community center. And I'm just saying that that money, our taxpayer money, could be spent for, to help the homeless, and kids and youth, nutritional education, community gardens, climate change, COVID recovery. It seems like those are the higher priority things, more than, you know, it's, it's great to have fun and socialize, and, you know, if people want to drink, that's fine, but it just seems like our taxpayer money could go to something that is more a higher priority. And, you know, because I'm a homeless advocate, I see the people just asking for, you know, $1, $2, $5, just so they can have lunch, and they're not even getting that kind of help. And then this big corporation comes and asks for a $5 million handout, and it doesn't, doesn't seem fair.
We're over two minutes. Would you like to answer the question?
I'm done.
And I appreciate all that you do for the community with our homeless population. You want to talk about the ingredients of the beer?
The ingredients of the beer.
I think that was the question.
Yeah. Beer can be made GMO-free, and, and we use non-GMO ingredients. There's only four ingredients in beer. It's water, grain, yeast, and hops. It's pretty straightforward. It's same way all beer is made. So if the GMO is a concern, I would like to put that to rest, yeah.
So there's only four ingredients in your beer?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's good.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Joyner. I don't have a yes sign or no sign. I've talked to a lot of people that's for it and against it. And the one, and I came in kind of late with this thing. The one question that came up is, how did this property, a public property, become available without it being advertised for sale if, if the city wanted to sell it?
So the, the answer to that is, they, and Andrea, you can speak to this, they, they found us. We didn't find them. So, so they, they came, and we, as we do with any proposal for public land, this body, this elected body met in executive session, and we decided collectively that we would move forward with a letter of intent. That's how it came to be.
Yes, they approached us.
Well, that's fine. But, okay, so they approached you, and then, and if it became an, an idea, say, okay, we can, we can sell this property and bring in a new business, they stepped forward, let's see if we can bring in someone else to bid for this property.
Right now, we don't have any other inquiries or interest in the property.
I've never seen a for sale sign or for lease sign on that property. I've never seen it advertised. It happened pretty quick. And that's, and that's, and I'm not, you know, I'm gonna buy, hey, I'm gonna buy beer, whether it's here or not. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have my beer.
Yeah, no, I would just say that the reason this proposal is, is in, is in front of the council is exactly that. We had a proposal, and the proposal's been brought to council, and now being brought to the public, and that's the proposal that's being voted on.
I don't know if it was brought to the public first.
That's what we're doing right now.
Oh, yeah, that was, I mean, how many months? I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not wanting to debate yes or no. You know what I'm saying.
But I do want people to be clear on how the process had worked. The process is, it, they came to me, and they said, do you think the city would be interested in, in selling this property for this use? And I said, I really have no idea. I have to ask the people in charge. We asked those people in charge, and their, their interest was, there is enough interest to have a letter of intent, so that we can work through this over the, the coming months on an actual contract. We can come talk to the public, get the public's input on the process, and then at some point, it will go back to council, and council will actually vote yes or no. That has not occurred yet, so I want to be clear on that.
So you're, you're in, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not at you. But, so you're in charge of the development? Okay. So if it became available, why don't you say, okay, somebody came to me, let's see what other interests we can get? What other, you know, what else can we do with this? Because I've spent a lot of time in the community center, inside and outside, looking for parking. I mean, I've driven around for minutes and minutes trying to find a place to park. But, I mean, that was overflow parking. So I don't, and I thought that's what that was intended for. But since it became available for purchase, why wasn't it available for others? You know, why didn't you just put it out there and advertise it, maybe for two months?
Maybe if this is, it's not a proposal that moves forward, maybe that's something the elected body wants to do. But at this point, it was a proposal made to us, and they are going to react one way or another to the proposal.
Yeah, I just, it's just, something doesn't seem right. And that's all I'm saying. That's from what I'm hearing from both sides. Like I said, I'm gonna buy beer whether they're here or not.
Thank you, sir. This first microphone, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Meadows, Ward Three. Somebody used the word sleepy a while back, and I would like to say more like asleep. We lived, we moved here 15 years ago, built our house because of the dynamic city that it is, was. We want to see this project go through. We appreciate all your work, and I'm for it 100%.
Thank you, sir. Scott, it doesn't look like there's anybody behind you. We'll have you as our last comment, and then we'll close the meeting.
I want to thank, we live on Bank Street, so I want to thank Stillfire for investing millions into our community. I think it's huge what they're doing, and I, everybody's talking about this oceanfront property at the corner of Powder Springs and Atlanta Road, and I'm confused about it, because really, all it does is a bunch of bouncy houses sit there during the John Quill Festival. My kids don't play in it. I don't see many kids playing there. So the fact that they're actually doing something with the property, I think everybody should be very thankful for that. And to answer the question about the school, I know the lady that owns the school here in the village, it won't be there by the time Stillfire arrives, actually are moving the school to the other side of Smyrna, and it has nothing to do with Stillfire. It's actually because they're expanding. So I want to put that myth to rest, and thanks Stillfire for what they're doing. I think it's going to be huge for our community.
I said that Scott was going to be the last speaker, but then I see my pastor behind him, and if he wants to speak, I'm going to let him.
And I was not going to speak, but when the clergy part was brought up, here I am. And there are other clergy in the room, clergy that I have a tremendous amount of, of respect for, that we don't feel the same on this. I've got church members up here on the board that disagree on this, but that I still hold a tremendous amount of respect for. I've got church members all around me in the room that disagree, that I hold a tremendous amount of respect for in all sides. I want to talk about this just for a second on why I support it. I'm in the sales business, and I need every opportunity I can get to reach people with the gospel of Jesus Christ. And Stillfire Brewery is a third place. It is a third place where there are generations, especially young generations, who will not step doors in my church. They will not step door in my second campus, even though it is a missional campus and doesn't hold the high steeple. I look forward to doing Bible studies at Stillfire. I look forward to hopefully holding a worship service over there. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, this is a place that's going to be coming into our downtown, which, by the way, is one of where my camp, one of where my campuses are located. It's actually on the first picture that we looked at today. This is an opportunity and going to be a place that we can use to better our community, to reach people for Christ, which is why I'm here. I know that's not for everybody, but it's why I support it. Thank you, guys.
There are, that, that will conclude the, the public portion. There are some council members, I understand, who would like to make comments. I just asked, we're at 4 o'clock. I'd ask everybody to keep their comments brief. Respect for everybody that's here. Respect for everybody that's here.
I, I will be very quick and I want to address one of the persons that talked about, what, what did we get in return or how much did we give up? And I guess, all of you probably know, I am not supportive of, of the brewery simply because of the location. That's one reason. Number two is the, the city's spending all of the money that we get from the brewery to, to build a, a park, so to speak, for the, for the citizens, when really I feel like it's for the brewery. But one of the things that we can, we can get in return is, the appraisal for this property was $863,000. 600 is that portion of the property that Stillhouse wants to move on to. If we want to get something in return, let's sell them the whole property and let them build the park instead of us taking the money that we get from them and us building the park. Let them do it instead of us. So that's my comment for the day.
Mr. Pickens, anything? Mr. Wagner? Mr. Lindley? Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes, I would like to say that I've had my request for questions up for a long time.
I don't have a screen up. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so my, one of my questions I would like to ask, maybe Scott Cochran could weigh in on it, is the possibility of the distillery because I heard Mr. Bejus mention that it would be something that Smyrna would have to approve the license of. And I know I've asked before and my understanding was that would, they would be able to do the distillery if it was approved by the state. And I didn't, from my understanding, it wasn't something that was going to come back to us. So if you could address that for people here, because I think, you know, some of them were asking that question. And then I have another comment. Thank you.
Sure, they, they would have to come back before us for all the licenses that they need, including a license for a distillery if they choose to, to do that.
Okay, thank you. And the other comment that I would like to make, because I've heard this said several times, that it came, and it, to me, it, it's a little bit misleading because it wasn't, it didn't come to us, to the council as an idea until it was really late May. And I believe there were a lot, there was a lot of work that was being done on this without the coun, without it coming to the council. I don't know if other council members were aware of it, but I think there was a lot of work done, you know, by the staff and, and, you know, before, I think my understanding is maybe even back from February.